All right, it is six o'clock. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Melissa, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmacher, Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt, Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
All right, so the mayor and Councilmember Jenkins did let us know they will not be in attendance tonight. So, all right, council, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
So, all right, item number three, the proclamation, the National Parks and Recreation Month, Councilmember Lake.
All right, thank you. So July is Park and Recreation Month, and so I will be reading the proclamation tonight. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Timneth. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks, Recreation and Open Spaces play an essential role in Timneth's community identity. Supporting active lifestyles, outdoor recreation and social connections. The town's investments in parks, trails and recreation programs contribute to residents' quality of life. And help shape the identity of a growing community. And whereas the town of Timneth's park utilization by its residents is above the national average. And they support the need for high-quality parks, recreation and programs. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities. By providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, reservoir and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas park and recreation programming and education activities. Such as youth sports, general programming and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values. Expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty. Of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the town of Timneth recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore be resolved by Timneth Town Council. That July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the town of Timneth dated this eighth day of July 2025.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, we are now on item number four, public comments. Just to confirm, it looks like Matt Machado, you want to speak on eight C, is that correct? Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure I capture that correctly. Okay. So we have general public comment right now. If you wish to speak on any general items, this is. Three minutes. So is there anybody who'd like to do? General public comment on anything that's not on the agenda for public comment? Hearing none. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. So tonight on the consent agenda, we just have the approval of the June 24th, 2025 Town Council meeting minutes. Do I have any changes with the consent? Okay, all right. So do I have a? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, oh, sorry, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, three zero on the consent agenda. All right, now we will move on to mayor and council reports. Councilmember Jenkins, do you want to start tonight?
I don't have anything to report other than this week. The North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization Council will be interviewing. Three final candidates for the for the executive director position, which is currently vacant. So hopefully we will have a new executive director. The candidates are all very experienced. And all of them know have relationships in in the North Front Range area. So we have a very good selection.
Donnie Robbins, do you mind coming up to the front with me here?
Thank you, sir.
So other report out. I want to just take a moment to thank the town staff and the volunteers for organizing a fantastic Fourth of July event. I know I spoke with Councilmember Jenkins at the event. So I was out at the reservoir the day before and saw firsthand how much work actually went into this event. And that just doesn't include all the weeks before that event. So. Thank you again to the staff and volunteers for their logistics, the setup, the coordination. It was a huge undertaking and I think it was really a huge success. So on behalf of council and our community, thank you for making it very memorable. I know, I think Cali is instrumental. I know Tom was there as well. I don't know how much sleep Tom got those couple of days, but I appreciate all the work he did. So the fireworks were amazing. I know we always get compared to our other communities and I think once again, our fireworks were amazing. You can kind of see Wellingtons from ours and you can kind of see Windsor's. So I think ours were much better, but we will, we will continue to. Challenge those communities with our fireworks. Upcoming, we've got movie night at the Timneth Community Park on Thursday, July 18th. So it's a really great way to get together as a community and enjoy the outdoors. I think this one might be Toy Story, but that's Thursday, July 18th. So coming up here quickly, and I actually had a question for you, Aaron. I think maybe Citizens Academy applications are coming up. Is Citizens, is that coming here soon?
Yeah, I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact application date, but I know the program starts in September, that first week of September. So the applications will be coming up shortly.
Okay, perfect, awesome. So be on the lookout for that. Just keep checking the website. I know a couple of citizens have asked about that. So. It's a great way to get involved with the town. All righty. Anything else, councilmembers? Okay, all right, on to regular business. So item seven A, the first reading and setting a public hearing on July 22nd, 2025. At 6:00 PM for ordinance number 11, series 2025, and ordinance adopting the 2024 International Fire Code. Ms. Stifel.
Thank you. On first reading, as council knows, and some of our members of public may know, we only do a short explanation of the ordinance. And then this will be set for a public hearing on July 22nd at 6:00 PM here in the town center for continuing. At that time, we'll have a public hearing, take comments and have a more detailed presentation of this. But what you're looking at is this ordinance will adopt, would adopt the 2024 International Fire Code. And the town is within the Pooter Fire Authority. They have recommended to the town that we adopt the 2024 International Fire Code. Currently, we're operating under the 2021 International Fire Code. The Pooter Fire Authority also went through this in great detail and with committees to recommend specific amendments to the International Fire Code. That would be appropriate to the communities and have recommended those amendments to the communities, including Fort Collins. And Laramie County, which are considering also adopting the 2024 Fire Code. I believe that it's already been adopted by Fort Collins. The International Fire Code is a model code that addresses a number of building requirements and requirements as to fire safety. Some of the key changes in here relate to for 2024, temporary housing has been added. Language on lithium ion batteries, language on e-bikes and scooters. And so it's just an updating of the town of the Fire Code, also emergency response communication enhancement systems. High red fire extinguishing systems, carbon monoxide alarms were added for all types of occupancy. Refrigeration requirements were updated, distill spirits and liquors requirements were refined and inflatable amusement devices were added. So those are some of the basic updates that are updated in the 2024 code. And then the ordinance also sets forth in its exhibit these specific amendments that will be specific to the town. Including creating an appeal board that the Pooter Fire Authority will have for appeals of any decisions by the fire building authority. Building official and we will, I'm sorry, the Fire Code official will provide more information about that on second reading. We have here in the audience Sean McGaffin, who is the Division Chief and Fire Marshal from the Pooter Fire Authority. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, but he can probably answer them much better.
Yeah, unfortunately, I won't be attending the 22nd meeting. I'll be out of town. But this makes a lot of sense to me. There are a lot of changes. And I know lithium ion devices have been the source of more than a few fires. So I'm glad to see that that's being addressed in the updated Fire Code. And just to be clear, all the amendments recommended by Pooter Fire Authority. Will be noted in the presentation at the next meeting. Is that correct?
I don't think we're going to go through every amendment that they request. They are all in the exhibit. We will go through the highlights, but I do not.
But they'll be broken out in the documents, right?
They are broken, yes, and they are in your packet even today.
Publicly available if anybody has a question or concern. All right, great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Yeah, I'm just, I'd just like to tag along on that. Maybe for the next meeting, if there's any material. This was a big thing to read in the first reading or so any material after. If this gets approved, we could have for residents and our businesses would be absolutely helpful. Because it is a lot, but I just would hope that we could have something. So I, and I saw Aaron's email when I asked him that question. So anything we can give to residents or businesses would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, just so you guys understand, we use what's called a bricer system, which means that anybody that is a contractor, construction worker. Architect, any type of businesses that work throughout that are licensed through our organization. They will receive the email notification that that this has been updated and then it's available on our website. And then once it's adopted, as she said, it's adopted through the city of Fort Collins. Once we get Laramie County and Timneth. Then I can advertise on social media, but when we sit in two different worlds right now, like as we transition. I don't want to make it complicated for for, you know, homeowners and businesses and stuff like that. So we do plan on having a, you know, a lot of education around this once, once we're adopted.
So do I have a motion to approve the first reading and setting a public hearing on July 22nd, 2025. At 6:00 PM for ordinance number 11, series 2025, and ordinance adopting the International Fire Code?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Awesome. Any additional comments?
No, I think it's just that I think it's great, particularly with all the technology changes that have happened. So I think it's a great update.
All those in favor of the first reading say aye?
Aye.
All those against say nay. All right, so three zero on the first reading. Item seven B, resolution number 48, series 2025, a resolution initiating annexation proceedings for the property known as Timneth Shores. And giving notice of a public hearing on August 26th, 2025. Chad?
Good evening, councilmembers. A petition for annexation was submitted to the town, signed by a petitioner, Being Cottonwood Development Partners LLC. Owning more than 50% of the private property referred to as Timneth Shores. The property is located at the southeast corner of Laramie County Road 3F and County Road 42E. The statutory requirement of a minimum of one-six contingency to the current town limits is met through the Wildwing subdivision to the east across Timneth reservoir. This complies with the Colorado law stating that contingency is not affected by the presence of a lake, reservoir, stream or other natural. Or artificial waterway between annexing municipality and the land proposed for annexation. Staff reviewed the petition and determined that it meets those statutory requirements and is eligible for annexation proceedings. Based on this determination, we have presented these findings in the form of the resolution that would move the petition forward. Setting a date for required public hearing on August 26th, 2025. And at that hearing, you as council will evaluate full compliance with any legal criteria before considering final approval by ordinance. So again, this is just the stage where we are identifying that is substantially complying with the. The state codes and we're moving it forward for public hearing for additional input at that time.
Council, any questions? Questions? Right. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution initiating? Resolution number 48, series 2025, a resolution initiating annexation proceedings for. Property known as Timneth Shores and giving notice of public hearing on August 26th, 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments? All those in favor of the first reading say aye?
Aye.
All right, three zero on seven B. All right, we will move on to agenda item eight A. Which is ordinance number nine, series 2025, and ordinance approving a petition to include property within the Ladera Business District. Once again, Ms. Stifel.
Thank you. So the town has organized the Ladera Business Improvement District, which they organized in 2021. It is currently, oh, great. Okay, so the Ladera Business Improvement District is. Was organized to provide both financing for public improvements within the district as well as the Business Improvement District is authorized. Provide other support for commercial development. The current boundaries and service area of the Business Improvement District are approximately 64 acres. And constitute phase one of the Ladera development. The remainder. The town in approval of the BID also approved organization of, also approved a. Okay. The Ladera Business Improvement District also listed information as listed additional property as a future inclusion area. Now the town has received a petition from the property owner, Colonel LC, to include additional property into the Business Improvement District. That consists of 14.2 acres of property. It's zoned regional commercial. And the property proposed for inclusion is located south of Luna Vista Drive, west of White soul. And west of White soul. Okay, and if you look at the map that's before you. Okay, basic, well. Map is a little confusing. So the property that's shown in light blue is the property that's currently within the Business Improvement District. And then the property, thank you, the property that's proposed for inclusion is. The property that's shown in red, yeah, there you go, right below the blue. And I think it goes all the way up to the boundary of the blue. I'm not sure why there's two different colors of red, but it will go all the way up to the boundary of the blue. So the purpose, that property was listed as future inclusion area in the operating plan for the Business Improvement District. So it was always anticipated that it could be included. The developers also organized and the town approved metropolitan district. Which would be used for residential development. So the intent was that the residential development would be included into the metropolitan district. The commercial development would be would be included into the Business Improvement District. So this petition is consistent with that plan. And the reason why they're proposing this inclusion at this time is. And the reason why they're proposing this inclusion at this time is for two reasons. First of all, because they are looking at plating and development and some of the lots would be split so that they'd be half within the Business Improvement District and half without. So this would solve that problem, especially they may have like a developer on that property and how would you assess the tax if they're partially within, partially without the Business Improvement District. So that should clean that up. The second reason is that they are looking at going out for financing. And as you recall, the town has to approve an operating plan and budget every year for the Business Improvement District and the one that you approved for 2025 did anticipate that they would be issuing debt this year and it is their intent to do that. They like to do that in a near term timeframe because of the changing marking market conditions. What they are looking at in terms of issuance would be general obligation subordinate limited tax obligations and special revenue bonds. Senior bonds in the amount of approximately 19.2 million and subordinate bonds in the approximate amount of $6 million. And they're hoping to issue those this year with a 30-year term. And the proposal was first set, the ordinance had first reading at the last council meeting on July 8th, 2025. This is second reading and public hearing. The proposal is consistent with the operating plan and budget that you've approved. Wouldn't expand the boundaries of the BID, solving the problem of having some properties partially within, partially without the BID. Additional land that will be included is expected to be plotted and has actually a pending application for subdivision with the town. All of the property is zoned regional commercials, which is the requirement of the statute for inclusion. That is all that I have. Then I can stand ready for questions. Also, I believe that an attorney for the district is here to answer questions. And so we could first direct any questions to me and to the attorney for the Business Improvement District. And then we can ask for public comments as well, since it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Stoffel. We want to, does the applicant have a presentation? Alright, we'll go right into public comment. Does anybody have any comments on 8A? Oh yeah, sorry. Let's, do I have to open it and close it? Okay. Alright, no comment, no public comment? Alright, we will move into the council questions for staff on item.
Yeah, I mean, it all, it all makes sense, but I'm a little confused by the map. So just for clarification, the land that's being included in the expansion, is it PA 2 and PA 3 in total? Which are the two parcels that are adjacent to the existing BID? Is that correct? Because the orange, the orange outline is, doesn't go up to the blue, so it doesn't make sense.
That's my understanding based on the map that I have, but I know it's a meats and bonds description. Well, that's because it hasn't been fully subdivided. So the applicant's attorney can confirm that, but that's my understanding that it's PA 2 and 3.
It's just PA 2 and PA 3, correct? You gotta push the little button till the red light comes on. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Town Council Nicole Paykov on behalf of the Ladera Business Improvement District. You are almost correct. The parcels PA 2 and PA 3 will be included into the Business Improvement District, but there's a northern portion on each of those that are already included into the Business Improvement District. That's why there's that red portion on top of the orange.
Okay.
It is, it is a little bit confusing, but that's why we are requesting the inclusion to make sure that the entire PA 2 and PA 3 parcels are included.
Okay, and PA 4, the northern boundary of PA 4 is right at the bottom of the orange line. Is that?
That's correct, and we are not requesting inclusion of PA 4 at this time.
So it's from that line all up. I got it. I understand now. And hopefully anybody else that's listening does as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment here. Changing these boundary lines by no means changes any of the financial structure or the service scope of the BID. Is that correct, Ms. Stoffel?
Correct. So the service scope already anticipated that this was future inclusion area. So it anticipated that this property would be included into the BID likely at some point. In terms of the financing structure, there's no change being requested to the operating plan or the budget, which this is consistent with and they have not yet issued any debt in terms of the financing. So all of that is forward looking anyway.
Okay, so really all we're doing is just moving boundary, then nothing in terms of anything with the BID at this point is, so, okay.
Yeah, the biggest impact is that then the property that's being included would be subject to taxation by the BID. That's the biggest impact on that property.
Perfect. Thank you. How's my questions and, alright, let's see here. Do I have a motion to approve item 8A, ordinance number nine, series 2025, an ordinance approving a petition to include property within the Ladera Business District?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments?
No, I, I mean, other than I think it makes sense. It was anticipated and as a future inclusion area. There's nothing changing with regard to the operating plans, which still must meet approval by the town on an annual basis. So I think it's just part of the process of moving forward with, with the development. So I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Jenkins. This is a planned expansion and I think there's, I appreciate the applicant coming forward and I appreciate that this is a time sensitive issue. So I will be voting in favor of it tonight. All those in favor of 8A, ordinance number nine, series 2025, an ordinance approving a petition to include the property within Ladera Business District, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Right, approve 3-0. Alright, on to item 8B, ordinance number 10, series 2025, an ordinance approving the Timmuth Landing Plan Development Overlay, amendment number 2. Chad?
Thank you again. I know in the past we had presented items that were concurrent together. However, I do believe that these are separate items and entitling a separate document. So those should be reviewed on their own just to avoid some confusion if there is any. So we will be doing these as separate items, just to clarify. This application seeks to amend the Plan Development Overlay District for the remaining portions of the Timmuth Landing Subdivision referred to as Timmuth Lakes North. The primary objective of the amendment is to modify certain dimensional standards within the land use code for future residential development in the Timmuth Landing community. In accordance with table 2.1, the property was properly noticed by way of physical posting on the property. Letters, letters were sent to owners within 500 feet and a publication was submitted to the Colorado. This application was presented to the Timmuth Planning Commission at the June 17th meeting, where they recommended approval by a 4-1 vote. And I can get into that vote a little bit more as we go through the process. The original Plan Development Overlay approved in August of 2015 governs parcels 1 and 2 of the Timmuth Landing subdivision, which makes up the entirety of the Timmuth Landing community containing 497 acres. The adjacent land uses to the subject property are bound by the McMorris subdivision or Harmony subdivision 10 filing to the north, as well as unincorporated Laramo County. The Harmony Club subdivision to the east and to the south, Walker Manufacturing, as well as other unincorporated Laramo County. And then lastly, to the west is the, the initial phasing of the Timmuth Landing subdivision. So to date, 246 acres within the broader Timmuth Landing subdivision have been redeveloped under the provisions of the original PDO and the prior amendment. These areas include a mix of single-family detached and attached residential units as well as commercial uses. This application seeks approval to amend that overlay district for the remaining undeveloped portion of the subdivision, again encompassing approximately 252 acres. The Plan Development Overlay District provides a zoning mechanism to amend dimensional standards through a discretionary approval process, allowing for modifications where strict application of a base zoning may not accommodate innovative or context sensitive design. This process would entitle the properties within Timmuth Lakes North, the subject area, to a curated table of dimensional standards that varies from the existing requirements of the code. The underlying zone districts within the Timmuth Lakes North area are a mixture of single-family residential, the R2, mixed residential, R3, and the commercial mixed use. The property is designated as medium density residential in the Timmuth Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. As identified or defined by that comprehensive plan document, this is the broadest category in terms of allowable density, providing for typical suburban development with considerations for adjacent land uses. This plan suggests the inclusion of small lots, single-family units, duplexes, triplexes, and multifamily townhomes as a primary use within this designation, with secondary uses intended for neighborhood and community parks. Additionally, as you may recall, the amended Timmuth Landing Sketch Plan established a maximum of 764 dwelling units within the subject area, which aligns with the allowance within the underlying zoning district. In addition to compliance with the town's technical criteria, this application's reviewed against the Plan Development District Review Criteria, which I will briefly highlight. They have five criteria within that. One being that the district shall have a unified character throughout the district and that it shall have no more adverse effects on safety or welfare of the surrounding properties. Adequate utilities shall be provided. The proposed Plan Development District will not substantially impair the appropriate use or development of adjacent property. No significant traffic issues are created with this document and the Plan Development District results in a more efficient development, which may contain innovative or creative development. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process. So the proposed amendment targets modifications within the following areas. There is a area referred to as R2 North, R3 North, and then a transition overlay, which is intended to create a, as it's termed, a transition between land uses or buffer between open space areas within the community existing. And those are intended to be regardless of the underlying zone district in which it falls. So these modifications include reduced lot sizes and setback requirements, which aim to support a more compact residential development while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. In exchange for this flexibility, the applicant is proposing to dedicate a minimum of 30% of the overall gross site area for the development as functional open space, which exceeds the town's current requirement for the single-family development by 10%. The proposal also includes the extension of a regional and neighborhood rail network. So what we're seeing on the screen right now is representing what would be permitted with this document within the R2 North area. So within the map, it is this large portion of the development. Within this, the applicant is proposing a detached and attached product type that would have a varying dimensional standards within that, again, to allow for more of a compact development for flexibility to have different housing types and housing costs. So the existing PDO overlay for the R2 area, currently they had reduced that to 5,570 square feet. If it were a detached product, they would be permitted 4,000 square foot allowance. And the attached is then in alignment with what our R3 standards are in the code currently, which would be 1,800 square foot for a attached lot. Going down the line, so the minimum lot width would be reduced from 50 to 45 and 20 if it is attached. I do want to point out that we have had conversations with the developer on this specific item and we've talked about this. I believe it's some code amendments, garage frontages, other things like that. 45 is kind of right at the very line, fine line of what we would be accepting of within this to ensure that they're providing adequate street trees, driveway, meeting driveway requirements as far as and garage requirements as well. So that is one thing that we've had conversations about, ensuring that all other criteria in the code is met with this product type. The minimum lot frontage would not change for the detached, but will be reduced for the attached. The impervious surface lot coverage is now just matching what our R2 is now, 60%, 75 to match the R3 in the attached product, should that be proposed within this development. The garage front yard setback would be reduced to 20 and the side yard setback would be reduced to 5 as well. There is an incentive within the code that if a property is backing open space, they are able to get a reduction from the standard 7 to 5 within the development. There are proposed properties within this area that could also meet that requirement. Minimum rear yard setback, reduction from 20 to 15, again, to allow for a different product type within that area of flexibility. The small area with the R3 now will actually be swapped based on conversations from adjacent property owners and the location access, access into the site. It was a conversation suggested that this area actually accommodated a little bit larger product type than what the R3 is to limit the number of homes and also create that transition between different land uses. So they're actually going to increase the lot area, lot width, frontage, and reduce the impervious surface lot coverage. Slightly getting more in line with what the R2 is, but still smaller product than what our R2 would allow, which is 6,000 square foot, 54 foot lot width. Which is what comes into play within the transition zone. So everywhere that is highlighted in the blue hatch is intended to just meet the standards, the base standards of what the R2 zone district is within our code currently. So it would be meeting all the requirements of R2 for lot area with frontage. So there would be a greater side yard setback in these areas and rear yard setback. So there, this would create more of larger development in scale to the rest of the R2 to help transition between these, again, these adjacent land uses is the intent. So with that, staff has reviewed this application against the Plan Development Review Criteria and found it to be in compliance with all of the above. Criterion one, the PDO overlay and master plan community encourages larger range of mixed housing types. So we felt that it is meeting the ability to meet criteria one, also while transitioning in meet criteria one, also while transitioning and matching the character of the the surrounding properties. To item two, criterion two, adequate utilities will be reviewed and provided through the plating process. At this time, we feel that what is being proposed with this document would not have a negative effect on those. If there was any impacts, we will be reviewing those at the plating process. For the third, will not impair the appropriate use of development on adjacent property. It's just changing the standards for portions of land within the Timneth Landing subdivision. And the implementation of the transition overlay is intended to lessen the impacts on those adjacent lower density developments surrounding it. Criterion four, that no significant traffic issues are created. Again, this is not anticipated to create traffic issues or constraints. Traffic study was completed within the first filing for portions of the property. And then we will do a future traffic study with compliance letters that will be provided as we review the plating of these properties. And then lastly, the overlay is deemed a more efficient development as it prioritizes various housing types in a compact housing product, along with the traditional housing types that are seen in surrounding areas and in the Timneth Landing subdivision. The project includes efficient trail and park systems, increasing the connectivity within the development and through the town. A neighborhood meeting for this proposal was held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, in accordance with the town's procedures for public notification and engagement. Approximately ten residents attended that meeting with the purpose of presenting this proposal to solicit feedback and answer questions from adjacent property owners. A summary of the meeting was included in your packet. The code accepts one neighborhood meeting for all applications submitted concurrently. Therefore, one neighborhood meeting was hosted to engage the the public in reviewing of the sketch plan amendment, but that went before you guys and was approved. The P D overlay amendment that we're discussing now, and then the subsequent preliminary plat. The main public concerns raised during the meeting focused on the reduction of the lake area. If you guys recall, the previous sketch plan showed a bit more detail and an increase of that lake, which had some concerns from the existing residents. Just curious why that transition to what they did are moving forward with now. So within that that meeting, we were able to provide additional feedback as to kind of the history, as to why that occurred. In addition to that, proposed traffic calming measures or concerns was another item that was raised within that meeting. Those, that has been discussed internally and reviewed and feel that plans have mitigated those concerns or work to lessen those impacts from the the community that raised those concerns. So that was just a brief highlight. The main concerns that arose from that meeting that was held last year. So with that, staff again has reviewed it against our technical criteria, as well as the review criteria, and feels that it is compliant and is recommending approval of this P D overlay amendment number two with the following conditions, to allow staff to work with the applicant to address minor modifications, unresolved comments prior to final signatures, and that the future plating of the development, under the modified dimensional standards established by this overlay, shall not exceed the permitted density outlined in the Timneth Landing Sketch Plan Amendment number one, establishing a maximum of seven hundred and sixty four units. So this document does, would allow for smaller, denser development. So there is the ability for the applicant team to create, to subdivide and plat these lots in accordance that may get closer to that seven sixty four than what would be permitted with the the underlying zone district. So this requirement or this recommendation would be to, would allow for that revision or the flexibility to to plat these lots, but within the confines of the seven hundred and sixty four of the sketch plan that was approved. With that, I will turn it over to the applicant team if they have anything to add for this specific item.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thanks, Chad. We were a little, during planning commission, we had prepared to present this, both of these applications concurrently. So I'll do my best to kind of split these up. My name is Jeff Norberg. I'm with PCS Group. I'm here to present the P D overlay amendment two on behalf of Cattellus or Cattellus Timneth LLC. Let's see. Where's the? Give the clicker. I'd like to take just a brief moment to acknowledge the development team whose efforts have brought us here this evening. I'd also like to thank town staff for getting us here as well. I'm sure you're all familiar and as Chad, I think you did a great job describing the nature of the application. Timneth Lakes is an approximately five hundred acre master plan community located north of Harmony Road, east of Timneth Parkway, and south of Busgrove Road. Much of the southern portion of the project is already constructed and in conformance with the original sketch plan, which is shown here. The area in yellow is the subject of tonight's development applications. Earlier this year, we received approval on the, on an amendment to the sketch plan, which was basically an update to reflect the latest development plans for this area. You may recall relocating the northernmost lake to the west of Timneth Parkway and essentially replacing that lake with Neighborhood Park to serve as its central design feature. And as part of that amendment, as Chad mentioned, seven hundred and sixty four units were approved for this area of the community. A P D overlay had been approved back in twenty fifteen, along with that original sketch plan. And it aligned with that original sketch plan, obviously. The dimensional standards of the underlying zoning were somewhat different at that time, as were some of the allowable uses. So the primary purpose of today's P D amendment is essentially to update, update the P D overlay to reflect the changes to the original sketch plan or to the approved sketch plan, rather, cleaning up some planning area boundaries and documenting that lake reorientation. This shot, this slide shows the proposed P D overlay amendment. We have simplified the boundaries, as you can see, but we've also added this transition overlay, which applies the existing R two, Timneth R two standards to all of the areas in, in the diagonal hatch, as Chad mentioned. You know, these, these areas were located to ensure that lower density was maintained adjacent to existing development. We are requesting to reduce the, sorry, reduce the dimensional standards of the remainder of the R two area, partly as a response to the the reduced density within the R three zone area. But, and again, as Chad alluded to, we are committing thirty, minimum of thirty percent of this phase of the development to open space. And in addition, providing a robust network of trails that are available to all Timneth residents. So I'll stop there for this portion of the presentation. Thanks.
Do we have any public comment on this? Quiet tonight. All right. Great. No public comment. Let's go ahead and council ready for questions. Slake, do you want to start first?
So Chad, I have a question about, most of the time when issues like this come before council. In the past, a lot of times, planning commission is unanimous in their recommendation. And I see that this time they were not. Would you just give us a little bit of context of where their conversation was or what issues might have come up that they had concerns about that resulted in them not voting unanimously on this one?
Of course. So the, the commissioner that actually voted in opposition, part of that stemmed from an item that we'll discuss in the next application, being that there was a referral agency providing comment to this, being the CPW, identifying an area of a high, I forget the term right now, but there was identified species within there that they had concerns with and provided their recommendations for. So this commissioner was uncomfortable moving forward with these items without having a concrete plan as how we were going to respond to that comment, us being the town staff and the applicant as well. We have, I can get into this a little bit more on the next application, but I've had continued conversations with the CPW, feel that we have a a greater communication and way to move forward with these items to help lessen impacts that were identified by the CPW. But most of the concerns on these items were purely related on the not having a full understanding of what the plan of attack was for that.
Rather than the numbers.
Not to the number of the dimensional standards that were requested or how this is being proposed. It was mostly related to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So to be clear, CPW concerns had to do with wildlife nests, bird nests, et cetera. And those concerns exist whether these changes are made or not, if there's development on the property, correct?
Correct, with this specific application, yes.
Yeah, so it doesn't really impact, the, the changes don't impact the concerns. The concerns are, are still there regardless.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and just to be, to be clear, what was the proposed open space percentage before this proposed change?
I don't know that there was a, as part of the P D overlay, I don't think any proposals for open space were made. But, but town, town minimum is twenty, twenty percent.
Yeah, I know that.
So, so we are fifty percent. We, we're providing an addition, we're committing to providing an additional fifty percent.
Right, so thirty percent will be open space, which is ten percent above the, the minimum requirement. And to be clear to everyone, the density, the maximum density is not being increased. So they could presumably figure out how to get their seven hundred and, what was it, sixty four units or so to fit within the existing approved. And that may or may not result in the minimum twenty percent. So one of the positives, as I see it coming out of this, is more open space for the community, is what it sounds like.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the discussion as this was brought to, brought forward as a proposal, being that there are additional amenities and trail networks that would be proposed within the future development of this, aided in staff's support and allowing this modification to this table.
Yeah, and I, I also really appreciate the, the transition zone, particularly for existing home buyers that were expecting a certain density across the street or maybe close by, and they will still get what they, what they thought when they purchased the property. So I think that's a smart move, including the transition zone. Without it, I would have a problem. But I appreciate that it's, that the transition zone is there.
Chad, I, I was, I was thinking we were going to do these two together. So some of my questions are better for the next item.
Okay.
Just let me know. Do we, in comparison, do, and this may again be for the next one, do we have any idea how many lots or lots are going to be in the transition zone at that time?
So not within this document, that would be with the plating of the property.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sorry. And so just going back to this document, really, what we're looking at is the Timneth R two standards. And that's where the most significant changes are being made here is to our R two, right? Can you go back through that slide? Is that possible?
Yeah.
My apologies. Yes, so it will be impacting the R two by reducing the requirements within that area. R three, it is impacting that as well, however, it is providing it a larger square footage with that. So anything in orange here, depending on the product type, so you would have to, we, as we go through the review process of how the plating be determined on whether or not a lot was to be used as a, or function as an attached or detached product, they would have these changes to that dimensional standard. So both detached and attached could be within this R two, as I understand it.
Correct.
Okay. And just the guy that doesn't understand everything that's put up on the screen, when we look at the maximum impervious surface slot coverage, this one seems like a big change to me. Can you explain maybe how this looks and feels and how it impacts lots?
Yes, so currently, the standard requirement within R two is at sixty percent. So that's any, any coverage within your lot that does not allow for water to penetrate and filtrate. So that could be the, the building itself, any of them with a cover roof, concrete pads, driveways, things like that. So the allowance for this to be increased for the smaller lot sizes is to provide for, because it is a smaller lot type, the product is intended to have smaller yards, smaller, which would have a larger footprint because it is a smaller lot. But with the intent that they're providing increased open space and amenities within the development that that would be utilized by some of those home buyers with those. So it's pretty standard in the R three. That's where we got the seventy five percent from. So we had just used that for this reasoning for the attached product.
Okay, and, and in your, your justifications, you talk about like just adequate services. So when we talk about these changes here and you, you talk about that, we feel comfortable with.
with, I'm guessing, based on what you said, like the impervious service slot coverages could change those services like stormwater, is that correct? And, and we're comfortable with all that changes now based on these?
Yes, so we did evaluate it based on that, and it's a good point, that there could be the potential for these, this product type to increase that, however, I think that if this were to be a predominantly attached product type, that would actually be offset with some greater open space in other areas, from my understanding of how that would be laid out. So we believe what is in this proposal, say, we're not knowing what the, the plating is, we felt comfortable that we would be able to move forward and work on any concerns that arise from those impacts, but we were comfortable with that just from the overlay standpoint. But again, there's more review that is done at the plating process to, to ensure those requirements are met.
Okay, thank you. And so if we change these standards, do we, does it impact any kind of timing for the development? Nothing, this wouldn't change any of our construction timing in any way, right?
No, so the applicant team has had the, maintained a phasing plan with this portion of the development in two phases. That would not, I don't believe it changes anything based on this application, so moving forward, that phasing would be, be my understanding.
Go ahead, yeah.
Hi, Nick Mocobano with Cattellus. No, it would not. I mean, a lot of the infrastructure is the, is the same, right? Whether it's a sixty-foot lot, fifty-foot lot, right? I mean, it's the same amount of, generally speaking, same amount of roadway that needs to get built. So we don't believe that this adds, you know, any meaningful change to the, the amount of infrastructure, the duration of the development, or anything to that effect.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And just one more on yours criteria, Chad. Definitely, I understand kind of the efficiency, right? Like that this definitely increases our efficiency there. Can you explain to me what we mean by, I think you had in your explanation, what is an infill development? Can you walk me through maybe what that means?
Yes, so the infill would just be a new development within a property, essentially. So that's just new development within this. This promotes the ability, in staff's opinion, that it could be innovative beyond the conventional subdivision because it would promote or foster a more walkable or diverse neighborhood as far as product types.
Okay.
That was part of the reasoning for my response to the criteria is how that's meeting the intent of being innovative or having a higher standard based on this proposal.
Great. Okay, and you are staff recommending two conditions, that's right?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect, I just wanted to make sure the council we address those. Okay. Did you have more comments, Bill?
Yeah, is there any thought that any part of this would involve affordable housing?
Not affordable in the sense of income restricted, but there certainly was thought given to some of the changes in, in allowable uses to be able to deliver more affordable For instance, I mean, we had previously fifty-foot minimum lot size for detached, and that has been brought down to forty-five. So that would allow for a more affordable type product to be built. It also permits attached in, in the R2 zoning, whereas previously, the PD overlay did not, and that also would have the potential to deliver smaller, more affordable lots, affordable product. Although at this time, it's, you know, it's unclear whether attached product will be built or not, but this plan allows for more flexibility and possibility to build, you know, smaller lots, smaller product.
So it's, it's possible that you go forward with an entirely detached product line with smaller lots, that decision of attached versus detached has not yet been made?
Correct, yeah. It's very market dependent, right? Right now, I mean, just to be candid, I think it's going to be predominantly a detached community, like it is to date. I think that's just what the builder community that work, that we work with is, is generally steered to and had success with.
Right.
But, you know, we are all aware of the challenges with affordability, and, and a lot of home builders are moving towards smaller product, detached product, and we wanted to be positioned through this PD overlay amendment to accommodate those types of products.
Have the flexibility.
Exactly, exactly.
Basically, yeah, got it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Chad, I have one more question for you. With these lot sizes, is there anything maybe comparable in Timnith right now to what we're looking at for these R2s? I was just trying to get visually think about it, because I know we've got Trailside over here.
Correct.
So I was just trying to visually think.
Yeah, so this would be more in alignment with the product at Trailside, which is an R3 zoned community there, as well as the, the Parrot Homes that are already part of the Timnith Landings community. So those are, again, are a different product type on a smaller lot. That could be a potential with this amendment. Those would be the two main subdivisions that we've really kind of explored, the smaller lot sizes for that, but those would be the two to look at.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, sorry, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Nick mentioned that the attached product was not necessarily, was not allowed within the R2 initially. It actually is permitted, permitted use within the R2 zone just district. However, based on the lot requirements, it's not necessarily feasible in R2 to do an attached product. This makes it a little bit more, it makes it an easier step, more feasible to do so.
Yeah, that's a good clarification, Joan.
Council, any more questions or your staff or applicant?
I think with the, the discussions side of it.
All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 10, series 2025, and ordinance approving the Timnith Landing Plan Development Overlay Amendment Number Two?
So moved with the conditions as listed in the report.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I'll second it on the basis of the, the conditions being included as well.
Thanks, Bill. Any comments, Lisa?
I just want to say that I'm excited to see what comes of this. Having recently done tours of different communities that have a wide variety of different housing styles, lot sizes and things like that, I'm excited to see that. Going forward, I would always recommend all of our new developments, looking into options for providing some affordable housing. This is also just fresh on my mind because we did do a tour with Habitat for Humanity, and I know they're very interested in coming into Timnith if possible. So anytime that that's an option, I would just recommend that you look into what that could potentially look like, but I'm excited to, to see what comes of it.
Yeah, certainly the changes would allow for more flexibility of housing type, but I think it also sets them up for the possibility of doing some affordable housing, so, which really wouldn't be quite as possible with the existing plan, so. Yeah, I, I will be voting in favor of it.
Yeah, but I, I will be voting in favor as well, so after reviewing the packet and looking at the staff's very well-written assessment on this and their, and Chad's review, I, I go back to your comment earlier, Councilmember Jenkins, about the open space, which I really appreciate, and I appreciate the applicant doing that. I think residents appreciate that, kind of like our, our declaration today. I think that's still very important to this community, no matter what kind of housing we put in. And so I, yeah, I think based on the criteria tonight, I see no reason not to move forward with this.
And the, just one other comment, the CPW concerns as outlined in the comments that they submitted, we will be paying attention to those, correct?
Correct, yes, and I will touch on that on our next item as well.
Yeah, and I, I would hope, I mean, part of that, part of the reason those raptors are in the area is because of the existing access to water, but also because of the large trees that provide nesting. So when it comes time to consider, you know, construction and what, what existing trees might have to be removed, I think we should be very sensitive to the large, older trees and give them some respect, because the raptors depend on that, on those large trees.
All those in favor of the, again, all those in favor of ordinance number 10, series 2025, and ordinance approving the Timnith Landing Plan Development Overlay with the conditions one and two, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We are on to agenda item 8C, resolution number 49, series 2025, a resolution approving the Timnith Landing subdivision preliminary plat amendment number four.
Yes, this application seeks to amend the Timnith Landing preliminary plat for remaining portions of the Timnith Landing subdivision currently designated as development tracks. This amendment applies specifically to tracks A and B, which are proposed for the subdivision of lots into single, or six hundred and ninety-eight single-family residential lots, along with the designated tract, tracks for future parks, trails, open space and utility infrastructure. Again, just for reference, to the north, unincorporated Laramie County, McMorris, Harmony subdivision to the east, unincorporated Laramie County to the south, and then the existing Timnith Landing development to the west. The proposed amendment establishes a gross residential density of 2.8 dwelling units per acre, consistent with the allowable density permitted under the existing single-family residential in mixed residential zone districts. The conference of plan also has this properties designated again as medium-density residential. Apologies for the graphic, hoping the applicant team can provide a little more clarity on what this will look like, but this is a placeholder as I go through some of these items here. The plat supports the development pattern and dimensional standards established by the Timnith Landing Plan Development Overlay Amendment Number Two, which is, we just reviewed. The proposed lot sizes range from a minimum of 5,300 square feet to a maximum of 13,673 square feet, which would equate to an average lot size of approximately 6,709 square feet. This configuration supports a mix of housing types that aligns with the intended character of the subdivision. The preliminary plat dedicate, is dedicating approximately 53 acres of functional open space, meeting the town's minimum open space requirement for single-family developments. Within the open space plan, it does include a linear park designed to enhance accessibility within the development, which is seen in this green area here. This includes one centrally located neighborhood park, as well as four distributed pocket parks within the subdivision. All park space is located within a quarter-mile radius of all residential lots within this proposal to ensure convenient access. In accordance with the town's parks, recreation, open space and trails post-plan, the plat integrates a comprehensive trail network, including a neighborhood trail connections and a regional trail alignment facilitating a larger-scale connectivity across Timnith. That would be the connection from Harmony Road up to Bus Grove would be part of this submitted to create that connection of the regional trail. All trails and park amenities are planned to accommodate both hard and soft surface paths connecting parks and natural areas. Amenities within the parks will include playground equipment for recreational facilities for all age groups and abilities, shaded seating areas, open lawns and gathering spaces. I will note that with, in accordance with the House bill for the functional open space, we have reviewed this with their team and limited any turf areas to that which is determined as usable open space, limiting that as much as possible within this development. There is also a dedicated dog park, which is centrally located within that linear park and connected via trail system. So again, this is at 698 single-family lots, which is below the 764 allowance within the sketch plan. Staff has reviewed, reviewed this application against the subdivision review criteria, finding that the preliminary plat is a functional system of land used and compatible with the adjacent densities and lot sizes, complying with the medium-density residential designation on the conference of plan. Two, that the preliminary plat is in conformance, again, with the approved sketch plan amendment permitting a maximum of 764 single-family dwelling units. Compliance with criterion. Three, that the R2 and R3 zone districts, it complies with the R2 and R3 zone districts as well as the PD overlay requirements and dimensional standards, and also meets the medium-density residential designation, furthers those goals and policies of the conference of plan by encouraging efficient and internal use of land to create a livable community. Criteria D, that the plat meets the criterion for adequate capacities for transportation design and utility design. Again, a transportation impact study projected the increase in traffic and road systems has been designed and constructed to accommodate a capacity per the Lucas standards. Utility infrastructure will be extended into the project and has been designed to accommodate the increased demand with this proposal, and that the utility districts have committed to serve this development, and the specific infrastructure will be reviewed in more detail at final plat. Lastly, the connectivity is being provided to the adjacent streets and circulation within the property is orderly and appropriate, just wanted to briefly touch on that. So there would be with this plat, a access to Bus Grove Road to the north, access to Timnith Parkway across the existing PSD site, and at some point, the discussion of connecting to Grand Tree Boulevard within the Harmony Club subdivision would also be part of this Negative impacts on adjacent land uses have been identified and met with this preliminary plat. The negative impacts that have been identified included increased traffic and drainage. These will be mitigated, mitigated by the construction of the internal roads and access points, along with the dedicated detention areas within the site to control that runoff. Again, staff in alignment with this criteria, staff did receive a comment from the CPW as a stakeholder, acting as a stakeholder for the wildlife, issued a comment letter in response to the development of the Timnith Landings community. And they identified a high priority habitat on a property adjacent to Timneth Landing, so not actually on this property, but adjacent to and within a radius that they've had identified within their letter. So they offered suggestions, suggested acts for the developer to limit any disturbance around this area. So staff is planning to continue conversations with the applicant to to find areas to limit the disturbance around this site, to make sure that we are being mindful of of these 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 species and working as a partner for the with the CPW as best as possible at the stage that we're at within this development. So again, that was a letter that was attached to your attached to your packet. And part of the reason why why a planning commissioner was uncomfortable voting in favor of these without having further understanding of what that requirement actually was, or or suggestion from the CPW. And then lastly, the subdivision offers a range of housing types, which could include townhomes, parteromes, and standard front-loaded based on the PD overlay. These additional lots created within the plat will further enhance the diversity, offering a range of lot sizes that accommodate various home values. And this plat would facilitate the additional population growth needed to support the demand of future development within this community. So with that, staff has reviewed against technical criteria and the review criteria, and is in support or recommending approval of the Timneth Landing Subdivision Preliminary Platte Amendment Number Four with the following conditions, again, to work with the applicant to address minor modifications. Second, a zoning map boundary line adjustment be approved and recorded prior to the recording of any final plat resulting from this application. So as we were in review of this plat, it was identified that there were a few lots that created split zoning with in between the CMU and R3. So we have reached out to the applicant, who has actually submitted a document for our review to ensure that the zoning boundary matches the plats and does not create any conflicts of split zoning. So there's not a lot, a single property, that would be resulting in two different zoning designations, which could be problematic. So that is something that the applicant team is working with staff on and is currently in review, but we wanted to make sure that that was addressed prior to the final recording of any final plat with the stock with the upcoming documents. And then lastly, that the applicant continue to collaborate with the CPW or other relevant environmental agencies to identify any potential areas of disturbance to known protected wildlife species. With that, I will turn it back over to the applicant team to give a little more context on how this this development would look.
Thanks again for being here this evening. So picking up where I left off. The this is an illustration of the proposed preliminary plat amendment for the area in yellow being the area we are discussing tonight. In total, as Chad mentioned, we are proposing 698 dwelling units in this phase or in these two final phases, you know, well below the approved 764 dwelling units allowed by the sketch plan. In addition to meeting the land use designation of the comprehensive plan, this phase will also see the construction of important trail connections as outlined in the comprehensive plan. One of the central design features, as discussed during the sketch plan amendment earlier this year, was that this neighborhood park would essentially become the the central focus around which this phase of the community will be built. For for about 75% of the residents in this in these final two phases, this park will be about a five-minute walk away, and for about half of those folks, it'll just be right at the end of their block as we've designed it. It's an approximately 12-acre park. It spans, I would say, I think it's three quarters of a mile, but it's definitely close to the full breadth of the community from east to west. These next few slides show some additional renderings of that park. It will feature a large inclusive playground, multipurpose turf fields, dog park, a number of walking paths with connections to the rest of the community. Ultimately, we're trying to provide as many amenities to as wide a range of ages as possible within this park. In summary, we're excited to continue moving Timneth Lakes toward its final phases of construction. These preliminary plat and PD overlay amendments will enable the Timneth Lakes community to be compliant with the approved sketch plan. This concludes my presentation on the prelim plat. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to public comments. Mr. Machado, thank you for waiting.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Matt Machado with Lyons Gaddis. I'm an attorney. We're at 950 Spruce Street in Lewisville, Colorado. My law firm represents several owners of the Aiken lateral ditch. For 100-plus years, the Aiken lateral has delivered the owner's water from the lake canal down through the land that we've been looking at here, the Timneth Landing Development under Harmony, and then onto the owners, onto the owner's properties for irrigation. I passed out some, or I gave Ms. Peters Garcia some handouts, and there's a map on the on the front of that with the Aiken lateral. Needless to say, the Aiken lateral ditch owner's water rights are tremendously valuable to the owner's properties, and the Aiken is critical to the delivery of those water rights to their properties. To date, the Aiken has not been adequately addressed in any of the town's prior approvals over the last several years. We've been working or trying to work with CAC, the owners have been trying to work with CAC on an agreement to modify the lateral, the Aiken lateral across the property for the past five years, and we haven't been successful yet. We've submitted a couple of letters to the town, 2022, 2024, just to make sure that the town is aware that the issues with the Aiken are out there and in moving forward with approvals that the town would make sure that the Aiken was protected. The the location of the Aiken that you see on on the plot maps that we're looking at here, that's a that's where the Aiken's been moved to. We don't have an agreement yet to actually move the ditch there. But the good news is, even though this agreement's long overdue, we are, for the past several months, we're back at it with CAC after a hiatus, working in good faith with CAC. And I think so far, those discussions have been productive, and I'm very hopeful that we that they will result in an agreement after all these years. And we appreciate CAC's efforts to recent efforts to to get that back moving. I'm here tonight to renew the lateral owner's request that any further approvals of the Timneth Landing Development, the whole thing, actually, including what we're talking about tonight, be conditioned on CAC obtaining an agreement with the owners to allow modification of lateral ditch, because right now that this they're outside of the historical easement with the with the pipeline, and that the inclusion of an accurate depiction of the Aiken and the associated easement occurs on the maps, and that we have appropriate plat notes to protect the Aiken lateral. We hope the town recognizes the importance of importance of irrigation ditches in the town within its boundaries and takes steps to protect those ditches. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Awesome. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, council questions for applicant or staff?
Yeah, so I have a question. Why isn't protecting the Aiken lateral one of the conditions for approval? Because I I mean, we already have, as I understand it, we already have developed property sitting on top of the Aiken ditch pipe that's been put in without an agreement. And I I don't know if it's necessarily this applicant's property, but it doesn't make, I mean, these are serious rights. Water rights in Colorado are top of the list and only becoming more valuable with time. And I certainly don't want to see the town end up in some sort of litigation because we're not paying attention to this. We've been notified multiple times of the concerns with regard to the Aiken lateral and protecting those owner rights to the ditch and the and the water. I think it needs to be dealt with.
Yes, and I am in agreement, and I appreciate Mr. Machado for showing up tonight and reiterating this. We did receive these these emails and letters and did share those as they are, a referral agency within the town, specifically with this project, and urged the applicant to work on coming to an agreement with that. This item, yes, needs to be something that we need to identify to make sure that that agreement is in place. So again, appreciate the bringing this to the attention again, that that was still not completed on both parties.
Yeah, so I mean, from my perspective, if it was, I love the project. I really like the design of the the park. As someone who loves parks, we're kind of far from the park. It's takes a kind of a good hike to get over to our town park, at least from my house. So the fact that this is going to have a park, a very large park adjacent to everybody's house, we're very close, is a really cool design. So from a livability walk perspective, I think it's a I think it's a great design. But I also think you have to respect the existing rights that have been in place probably for 100 years, right? I mean, that Aiken ditch has been there through multiple property owners. So I I'm in support of your project, but I am reluctant to vote in favor of it tonight unless there's an amendment that basically says that the plat doesn't go forward until they have an agreement in place with regard to the to the Aiken ditch property rights.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Part of this may have been my fault and failure to communicate well to Matt. But in one of the, I think it was the first preliminary plat comment response, Matt, Mr. Machado, provided a letter expressing these concerns, and Chad did comment stating that final plat, prior to any final plat approval, this agreement would need to be in place. So while this preliminary plat application does not contain a condition, Chad has made it clear to us, and I failed to make it clear to Matt, that that agreement will need to be in place before we can even get back in front of you all at final plat. So before we can go to a final plat approval, staff has has indicated in writing that we will need to present evidence that that agreement is in place, and that's very much our intention to do so. You know, there Matt is correct, there there is a long kind of history, and there's also been a lot of changes that have occurred over the years in terms of the alignment of the Aiken and, you know, just just certain things that have have occurred. And but I kind of stepped into these discussions with Mr. Machado and the Aiken owners kind of late last year, and I think we've made a lot of progress. I I spoke just this afternoon with Mr. McMeacon, who's one of the primary Aiken owners that are representing the lateral group. And, you know, we both were in agreement, we believe we're close, and we're supposed to be having a follow-up meeting with all the relevant parties here shortly. So I, you know, Commissioner Jenkins, I completely agree with you. It it needs to be in place. We can't build anything with that lateral there, right? So whether it's a condition of pre-plat or final plat, the reality is, is we need to realign that ditch. We need to provide easements that maintain the historic use of that ditch, and we are fully understanding of and in agreement that that agreement needs to be executed before we can begin development.
Right, Mr. Machado, are you comfortable with with the agreement being contingent on the final plat?
Yeah, I think that would be okay.
Okay.
I don't want to derail our discussions that we've been having. I think they've been productive.
Okay, that's that's good to hear. It sounds like you guys are on a path to resolution, which is really important. We'd like to see the development happen, but we also don't want to see things get derailed by lawsuits, and the town certainly doesn't want to be party to a lawsuit, so. Okay, good to hear.
We do not either.
Good to hear.
So Chad, just on that, can you explain maybe why you said preliminary plat, like this needs to be in place in final plat versus preliminary plat? Can I just want to make sure I understand maybe why you chose final plat versus preliminary at this time? Because you've made this comment way before this meeting, before we got to this moment, right?
Correct.
So can you walk me through your thinking?
Yeah, so we received this letter well over a year ago, I believe, when the initial preliminary plat came through. So that's where those discussions did occur. And we felt that staff that the final plat would be the appropriate from our standpoint, being that that is the document that would entitle the development of those lots. While the preliminary plat is establishing them, it did not grant any approval to move forward with the construction of that. So we felt in those discussions appropriate, comfortable with the final plat being at the time where those documents must be agreed upon to move that forward.
So to be clear, lots cannot be sold until you have a final plat.
Correct.
Okay, and and so this, if I understand it, as we move forward, what would come before council, what would not, and what would come as you as staff for this final plat? So if there's no agreement in place, does that mean you as staff don't present it, it stops with that with your comments made there? Or walk me through if there's no agreement in place, if we approve this preliminary tonight, and we get to final plat and there's not agreement in place, what does that look like?
Yeah, so that's a that's a valid point. So yes, that the understanding within staff and with the applicant would be that we would not move that forward for recommendation until sufficient justification was provided to us, meaning that those that the parties came to an agreement on that. And so we would require that the additional documentation and agreements be submitted with the final plat to ensure that that occurred.
Okay, so no vote, no vote, nothing in front of council? Because I guess in your timeline, right? Because I, I guess in your timeline, right, when we look at our timeline, that's, final plat is the last, right?
It would be, correct.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I understand what happens after tonight, okay?
Yeah, can we make a formal request that a copy of the agreement be included with the final plat documents when it comes before council? That way, we've made a, the council has made a formal request to include a copy of the agreement between the parties.
Is it your intent that that agreement would be recorded?
Yeah.
It's got to be recorded.
It's a matter of whether the two parties are comfortable making it public. So I think that both parties would want to weigh in on whether they'd be comfortable sharing that in a council.
I, I think, wouldn't it have to be public? Because ultimately, the maintenance of the, of the ditch and pipe, pipeline portion of it would be the responsibility of the homeowners association in perpetuity, right?
Yeah, I, I think the question though is whether or not the agreement will also serve as an easement or whether an easement will be provided by second, separate document. So if, if an easement was provided by separate document, that for sure would be recorded. I, you know, I haven't really given thought to whether or not the primary agreement would, would also be recorded. I would be supportive of including or agreeing to include any documentation that will be recorded and is not a private agreement between parties.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You agree, the public?
To the metro district, right?
I mean, it is, public entities are involved, so. So, and I believe that agreement is going to be recorded, that's, at least that's.
Awesome. Appreciate that. Chad, now walk me through timelines now. So to get to final plat now, can we set some expectations for? Do we have timelines now for, for this agreement would be, excuse me, need to be done? So the applicant can have expectations? So if we are looking at final plat, I just don't want there to be something that might delay in any way, right? We're all excited. So what would our timeline now be for a normal final plat, if you will?
That's a great question. I may need to talk with the applicant a little bit more on what that timeline from them would look like. But yeah, essentially with the approval of this document, you can have a final plat submitted in concurrence with that, at the risk of the applicant to get that process started. So a, the final plat has been submitted for this, so in the upcoming months, as we continue our review of this application, we will be looking and making comment to, to look for that document before we will agree to schedule a hearing with planning commission and town council.
Okay, okay, perfect. So planning commission, town council, so, okay, so a couple of months, reasonable. Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure.
I mean, I, I can just say our internal goals and stated, stated objectives are to have council approval by October, November at the very latest for the, for the remaining two plats, which are filings nine and 10, which have both been submitted or going through the process concurrent with preliminary plat, as Chad suggested, so that we can have a recorded plat by end of year and hopefully builder sales to begin construction at the very beginning of 2026.
Okay, and comfortable with that timeline? And Chad, you're comfortable as well with?
We can hear it right now.
No, no, I'm just saying.
I don't think so, you don't have an agreement yet.
I just want to make sure that.
Yes, that typically fits our timeline and we're comfortable with that. We'll just continue engaging, make sure that this document is part of that.
Yeah, and just one other question for both the parties. Is there anything else that has yet to be done with, in terms of the location of the Aiken ditch or, or pipe associated with the Aiken ditch? Is there additional construction that needs to happen?
Yeah, certainly construction. The obligation to construct the improvements would be catteluses or an assinee.
Right.
So we, there would be construction of the portion that traverses through our filings nine and 10. And then the engineering.
And just for clarification, that construction would take place prior to the plating?
No, that would, that would take place concurrent with the development of our next phase. So if we are able to hit our.
It would have to be contingent in, in the filed documents and in the approval that the construction.
Exactly, and that was kind of my, my point at the beginning, right? Is, is nothing can get, we can't develop our site unless we have a viable alternate route for the Aiken. And that can only be accomplished through an agreement with the Aiken lateral owners. So while, while you could certainly impose conditions on the final plat, the reality is that it's kind of self-regulating in a sense and that those, those need to happen.
I just want to make sure it happens smoothly for both parties and for the, for the town. We want to see you build your, your development and as soon as possible and so.
Any questions on other parts of this? Okay, I do have additional questions. I think the CPW on this, can we, they did make recommendations. I, I think, can we just make recommendations to follow what's in there by the CPW? Is that what we can do there? Is there?
Well, so there is a recommended condition, which is number three.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the applicant shall continue to collaborate with the CPW or relevant environmental agencies to identify any potential areas of disturbance to known protected wildlife species. It's not a requirement to strictly comply with all of their requirements. I think they'll be, or their recommendations, excuse me, because I think they'll, you know, deevaluate on a case-by-case basis and things like construction timing and things, some of those are much more, much easier to accommodate compliance with those recommendations. Chad can provide more information.
Yes, so I've had two follow-up conversations with a representative of the CPW, the district wildlife manager. And so just to get a little more clarity on what their expectation was and their requirements as part of this letter. He did clarify that they do not have statutory authority within their district. So these are purely recommendations. However, to feel that with the identification of those high priority habitats being the red-tailed hawk and a bald eagle, we, we certainly want to be mindful of that. So our recommendation would be to continue these conversations with the applicant and to work through those options to limit the disturbance. That may be to get in contact with the US Fish and Wildlife to see what their permitting processes are or to have a third-party biologist discussions that we can still ongoing, have ongoing and work within the intent and parameters of this. But some of the, the requests within this, no surface occupancy, that may be a challenge, especially after we've reviewed this and this came after a review of the, the proposal of some of these lots. So there will be, need to be conversations had. But again, the stance would be from staff, and I believe the applicant would certainly, I hope, support that as well to, to work on mitigations to limit that as this is a unique and special part of Colorado in this area, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have already engaged with US Fish and Wildlife. So I think in this recommendation, you know, the, what is it? Relevant environmental agencies, that, that's a key point, right? CPW, as Chad alluded to, is a recommending body. And a lot of their recommendations are, are pretty broad brush, right? They don't want to be in the business of making case-by-case determinations, right? Because then it, it makes them more difficult for them to apply their, their recommendations. So we are in communication with US Fish and Wildlife. They have been supportive of a permitting process that we would go through to ensure that we're taking all legal, you know, or doing all legal activities, right? That, that are required of us. And, and that's our ask from, from council is to allow us to work with the legal governing body, which is US Fish and Wildlife, and, and to not be, to not allow CPW's more broad-brush recommendations interfere with the development of, of the community. Because frankly, the buffer areas that they have simply do not allow for our development. It's, it's pretty cut and dry. The quarter-mile and half-mile radius buffers that they have do not allow for our development. The, the nesting seasons are too long. There's not a builder in Colorado that would agree to build between August 1st and November 31st, right? It's just, it, it's completely incongruent with the development of our, of our project. But we fully intend to comply with the legal governing body, which is US Fish and Wildlife. And, you know, we are, we are actually complying with the vast majority of CPW's recommendations in the letter. I can, I can go through them briefly. They also had comments about minimizing tree removal. We've worked with staff to ensure that all of the cottonwoods in that area, kind of on the northeast portion of our site, adjacent to, you know, in the area where the birds activity has lied, to, to preserve those trees. They had a recommendation that all perimeter fences be open. Chad and I have already agreed to an open rail fence standard. They advised against noxious weeds and having restoration of disturbed areas. We have an erosion control plan that will be agreed to at final plat. We are also in our, in our preliminary and final plan set proposing to remove several of the Russian olives that are invasive to Colorado that are adjacent to the cottonwoods. And then the only other comment, well, they had one that just said, don't feed wildlife, which not sure there's much we can do about that. But the, the last, the only other comment they had besides the buffers, which, which I mentioned, was a recommendation to build with UV protective glass, which is, is to minimize the, the likelihood of a bird flying into a window. But, you know, we have environmental resource, sorry, ecological resource consultants, a biologist that has been in business for 25 years and have, we've engaged on this issue to help inform us of our obligations, legal obligations, how we can monitor and, you know, protect these animals. You know, and, and their opinion was that that recommendation is more related to songbirds rather than eagles and hawks, right? They're, they're not necessarily the target for those types of, of injuries or deaths. So, you know, our position is that we have complied with the letter through what I just detailed. And in that letter, they specifically asked us to reach out to US Fish and Wildlife, which we have done and will continue to work through that process with them. So we believe we are already in compliance with CPW's recommendations. We are happy to have direct conversations with CPW if, if that is staff and council's recommendation. But I, I wanted to be candid about the, the challenges that those standard recommendations have on development and the reality that those, those are not going to be viable if just imposed by the letter of their recommendations. So hopefully that was helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And I do appreciate the conversations with US Fish and Wildlife Service. I think that's really good. The other thing, I, I presume native grasses are going to be a significant part of the landscape plan when you get to that. I know Trailside has done a wonderful job with their native grasses. In their second year, they're thriving, so they're reseeding and they look great. So, and that, that also supports wildlife and, and the kinds of animals that the hawks and the eagles prey upon and depend upon, so.
Any more comments, council? Perfect. All right, let's see here, sorry, lost my notes. So do we have a, a, sorry, a record?
I move to recommend approval, I move to approve the Timneth Landing preliminary plat amendment number four to the Timneth Town Council with the conditions as outlined.
Can I get a second, please?
Yes, I'll, I'll say.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry, I was reading all those in, any, any additional comments tonight?
No, I, I think the fact that.
Sorry, I think the fact that the two parties are in discussions and are comfortable with moving forward with this preliminary plat approval is good. I like the approach on the wildlife seems to be appropriate. And I like the design of the, the subdivision, so I'll be voting for this.
Yep, I'm going to be in voting in favor of this as well. Chad, what a very complicated but necessary process we've been through tonight, so thank you. I appreciate that. The detail work here tonight is great with all the key points that you hit on for the criteria. I will be voting in favor of this tonight. So all those in favor of resolution number 49, series 2025, a resolution approving the Timneth Landing subdivision preliminary plat with the conditions as outlined, say aye?
Aye.
All those again, say nay? All right, three, zero. Counsel, anything else?